Good evening. Would everybody please rise for an invocation led by the Honorable Councilmember Jim Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lord, as we ask you to continue our community to be together, as we continue to mourn the life of a young man who was tragically lost in a tornado that hit our community in the last two weeks, we thank you for the community response and for the proof that this is a strong community and the way that people came together to support one another, to help one another, to love one another. We ask you to continue to bless our public safety officers and firefighters, that they may continue to help those in our community in their times of need, but especially in this circumstance, we thank you for our DPW workers as well and the electrical line workers and all who came together in the immediate aftermath of this response to help those in need. We ask you to continue to bless us and help us serve this community, whether officials, neighbors, friends, with goodness, discipline, and knowledge, so that we may continue to have a strong community. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Good evening and welcome to the 1,995th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to take place on Monday, July 1st, 2024. Today, we are missing Lori Miller, who's at training, our clerk, and so our very much capable city attorney Carter Fisher will be taking the role tonight. Mr. Attorney, will you please take the role?
Absolutely. Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnek?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
And President McCollum?
Here. We are missing Councilwoman Toy on absence, but we do show six. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council held on June 3rd, 2024. Counsel?
We're moved.
Ooh. Wow, I'm gonna go with Donavick and Morgan. Sorry, Jim. It was fine. Do we have any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none. Mr. City Attorney, will you please take the vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCollum?
Aye. And then the minutes pass, six to zero. We are now going to move on to audience communication. We have set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak during audience communication, please make your way to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Loftus, and two months ago, I went to the City Council meeting and gave you all this letter. And let me just say that I was disappointed because none of you responded to the letter. Not a single one responded to my letter, but I did get something from the mayor's office, all right? But I feel I'm very disappointed. My wife and I are very disappointed that nobody responded to our letter. And alls we're asking is for somebody to come out to our property and see all the damage that the deer has done to our property. Now, there's a young buck and a doe that lives right across on Curtis in that wooded area, which is right next to the Curtis Creek Apartments. And every day, I gotta chase them off, but now I'm getting kinda leery because the young buck's getting up there and they have, you know, their temperament is a lot different than the doe's or the fawn's. My wife and I are both 68 years old. We have medical conditions, and we're frankly tired of chasing the deer off our property. They leave their feces there, they, you know, they, it's just, it's been, the last three years have been a nightmare for my wife and I. According to my letter, we invested over $10,000 to improve our backyard, and they basically have destroyed everything. So, you know, my wife is out there again, trying to get stuff together, but she just puts her arms up and goes, "It's a useless battle. Why are we putting more money into our yard when the deer's just gonna come whenever they want to and destroy it?" And we have pines in our backyard, and I know they've already, um, you know, scraped the trees, you know, so I have evidence of that, but it's getting very, very disappointing and frustrating that nothing has been done. You know, and I still have the offer out, one of the City Council members come to our property, take 10, 15 minutes, and I can show you exactly what's going on. It's just not my property. I understand it's a regional issue, all right? But it just seems like that deer, or the deer that are coming to our property, you know, we're just frustrated right now. So, I don't know if any of the council members want to come to our property for like 10, 15 minutes, and I can point out everything there is to it. So, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Well, thank you, sir. And with that, I'm sure that some, I'm not gonna speak for my colleagues, but at least for myself, I'm sure I'll take you up from that. I'd like to see the tour for 10 or 15 minutes.
Well, the letter I gave two months ago has our address, my email address, and my phone number, so you can contact me three different ways.
You got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any more? Oh, Mr. Martin? Good evening.
Thank you. Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. Just wanted to bring up something that was discussed a couple council meetings ago. It was about the attendance of council members. And years ago, I kinda remember this one, because the attendance of council members was never as bad as the zoning board. I realize there are things that come up from time to time, but as far as City Council goes, they tried to pass, and they did, a resolution, and at the time, it was in reference to a member, Joe Laura. And Joe was up there, and his thought, and I remember this exactly because it stuck in my mind, as someone who ran for City Council, attended a lot of meetings, and never got paid to sit here and watch some of the stuff that went on. But Joe said one time that, this is when he worked at Ford full-time, that he had a full-time job and that City Council was a part-time job. I understand that to a certain degree. Joe did travel, okay? Can't be in two places at one time. I understand it. That was later on, decided by somebody that that couldn't be done. But there are very few professions, and being a politician is one of them, that you get paid, no matter if you're there or not, no matter if you've read anything prior to the meeting, to educate yourself on what you're voting for. So, I would like to just explain to Laura Toy, if there's an issue, I don't know what it might be, but if she cannot attend these meetings, that I'm paying her salary, and others are also, that she should consider resigning if she can't do this job. And one of the things about doing the job is at least showing up. Now, I know that's gonna be cruel to some people, but sometimes the truth is hard to hear, but that's exactly how it should be. There's no other profession I know of, when she was in Lansing, that you could not be there more than 60% of the time and still have a job. Doesn't exist, not on this planet. So, I'd also like to see the clock returned at some point in time. I know you've been working on it diligently, each and every one, okay? Maybe in the next couple of years, it will arrive again, from the planning commission right up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further audience communication? Seeing none, I'm gonna now move to council announcements. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a lot of events since our last meeting, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of the events that we've had. I wanted to congratulate the Livonia Symphony Orchestra. They had a fantastic golf outing once again. I was proud to be a sponsor, along with many of my colleagues up here, and I also had the opportunity to play in the great event. Didn't play my best that day, so no trophy for me, but it was still a great time. Thank you to Charlie Mahoney and her group for putting on another fantastic city event. We look forward to it every June. That very evening, it was a kind of a busy weekend, but that very evening, I was able to represent the city at the Irish Fest, and I had the honor of presenting a commendation to this year's honorable chairpersons. It was Ron and Patty Cooley, and I got to participate in the opening ceremony, so, you know, it was quite the day, but very fun. That same Sunday, just when you thought we had a breath, Councilmember Buzinski and I actually were guest judges over at the Wilson Barg car show, and there was hundreds and hundreds of cars there. It was overwhelming, to be honest, but I wanted to give a shout-out to the Road Knights Auto Club for inviting Carrie and I, and thank you especially to Kenny Douglas, who put it out. We got to present plaques, and I had a winning '56 Thunderbird, and I forget what.
1971 Pontiac. My son picked it.
That's right. So, yeah, so we had a lot of fun with that, and if you haven't, it was their 36th Annual. It's huge. It's the biggest car show I think I've ever been to, so if you get an opportunity first weekend of June, put that on your calendar, because it was a great event. And then I wanted to talk about this past Saturday, we had our second annual Pride Day celebration here in Livonia, and I was happy to represent the city and invited to give the welcoming remarks, but I really wanted to thank the Human Relations Commission for sponsoring the event. They did a great job with that. And I also wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to our cosponsors, the Livonia Democratic Club and the Livonia Republican Club worked together, and their support and collaboration did demonstrate that unity, integrity, and acceptance can transcend political differences, and it was really nice to see them come together on that project. So, just a few things going on.
There's a lot of things going on in Livonia, as always.
Yeah.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to extend happy birthday wishes to three of my children who are celebrating birthdays this month. We, Lexi is turning 13, JD is turning nine, and Jack is turning one. So, we have had a lot of, we've had some cake, we're about to have a lot more cake. They're at home watching, and they said to make sure to do this. So, happy birthday, guys. I love you. Behave. Listen to mom. Thank you.
Councilman Morgan?
Yes, I would just like to address Mr. Loftus's comments about the deer, and I just wanted everybody to know out there that that has not been put on the back burner permanently. We have been discussing, a matter of fact, we just discussed it today, and we're working on a solution, and hopefully that will come out of committee soon, and then we can come to a conclusion on what exactly we're going to do to solve this problem, because we're aware of it. We don't need to come over your house, we can look out our window and see it ourself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Council President. I too agree with my colleague, Councilman Scott Morgan. I do think, and I hope that the item on deer comes out of the committee whole, and we have a discussion about it, whether to have a deer call or not to, or what the, what the city of Livonia's gonna do. I am frustrated because it's not just a simple fix. I mean, it's a regional issue. The deer are not just located in Livonia, they come from all sorts of communities. We had so much really great information from administration and our police department last year. We had a couple large meetings on it, and if you looked at any of the data that was given to us, you'll realize that, again, the deer, they come from everywhere, and they're not just gonna stop if the city does something by ourselves. But at the same time, I understand the frustration of the residents, and we can't just wait for other communities to do something. So, it's my hope that this council does take up the issue. Maybe by us doing something, it might spur some activity in the rest of Wayne County and maybe even up in Oakland County, but regardless, I think the city of Livonia has to do something, albeit, I think it's gonna be one of those issues that 50% of the people are gonna love our decision, and the other 50% of the people are gonna hate it. But then also, I do wanna say well done to Councilman Jim Jolly. That was a very nice invocation and honoring the family of such a devastating thing that our community faced last week. I do wanna say thank you to Mr. Brian Kahn, emergency management team, DPW, our police officers, our firefighters, administration, for jumping on top of this really horrible situation that has impacted so many people in the city of Livonia. And in the private world, there's a lot of people that work with this family in different capacities, and it just touched so many souls. So, I know it's a tough thing for us as a community to deal with, and just such a tragic thing, but thanks, President, Mr. Jolly, for those words, and thanks to the administration and your team for getting on a really bad situation, and regardless of what you do, it's a tough situation. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yes, I guess, you know, kind of changing tones, but I know it's a really important community event, and we have such a strong community that to make sure everyone knows this spree does start next week, a lot of people put in a lot of effort to make it just a great tradition in our community. It starts on Tuesday, and it goes through Sunday. There's pizza night, pancakes, car shows. Wade Entertainment was donated, tents and banners and so forth for the groundbreaking today at the senior center, and we appreciate their contributions to our community. So, I just wanted to put a shout-out for this spree, since our next meeting happens in July.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Seeing none, we're gonna now move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. Mayor, if you'd like the floor, it's yours.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, council. We thought we'd spend a little bit of time at the beginning of this meeting doing a sniglet for you of what we're gonna be doing as a whole team tomorrow, and that is debriefing as a result of the tornado that hit on June the 5th. We've got our Director of, Brian Kahn, Emergency Preparedness with us this afternoon, this evening, rather, and he's gonna run you through a little bit about not only what happened, but some of the things that people can do to make sure that they're better prepared as we head into this storm season, and we're in the midst of it actually right now. But I just wanted to spend just a bit of a time just letting you know that as a community, you know, our emergency operations center kicked into full gear within minutes of the storm hitting. And one of the things, though, that when you open up an emergency operations center that you always need to be conscientious of, is that when there is human life at stake, there's a huge component of the city, as you all recognize, that gets touched by that in one way, shape, or form. Everything from our first responders to neighbors who lived in the area of Houghton, friends who knew the Drake family, friends who worked with the Drake family, people that, you know, just understand what it means to have a child and think about the possibility of potentially losing that child. So, this community came together really strong and in a very unique way. We came together as only good neighbors could, and when you open up the EOC, one of the key components is to understand that when that happens, that you're going to get a lot of requests from people wanting to help in some way, shape, or form. One of the strengths of opening the EOC this time around, and we've had to do this on a number of occasions, was that we did manage a lot of contribution. A lot of companies, a lot of families, a lot of individuals wanting to find a way to contribute. And in doing that, I do think that we were able to put resources in the right place, whether those were resources to helping to feed our first responders, because they were there for long periods of time, our DPW crews, we had offers of food, far more than we had the capacity to use. And then, we were also able to help to direct some of the funding that people were offering for the family to the Livonia First Responder Foundation. Now, that becomes really critical in a community, to be able to have a nonprofit organization that will step up as the lead guarantor of funds, so that they do appropriately go where they're intended to go. So, we wanna make sure that we extend our gratitude to the Livonia First Responders Foundation for stepping up in that regard. This is a unique foundation that we have in our community. Not everybody has something like that, but it gave us the capacity to address people that wanted to make a difference and that wanted to help. The Drake family was immensely grateful for the help that came through the foundation, and that help continues to come to the family as well. So, it's one aspect of managing an operation, an emergency operation, that we don't always give a whole lot of time and attention to, but it was one that this administration was able to put key people in charge of and make sure that we had the resources necessary to direct resources appropriately. So, tomorrow, we gather for our leadership team meeting. We do that once a month, and one of the things that's on our agenda tomorrow is what Brian Kahn calls a hot wash. And we get in, and we go through the emergency minute by minute, and we look at where we succeeded, where we didn't step up to the challenge at, where we want to do better next time, where we need to build additional resource. Every opportunity that we have as a city to open up our emergency operations center is an opportunity for us to practice, to make sure that we are better prepared the next time an emergency hits our community. So, it is not unusual that we open up the EOC. We did it last year during spree, when we had severe weather during spree. We did it a lot during COVID. So, we're a very well-practiced community in that regard. My hope is that you all experienced a higher level of communication during this last emergency than you have in the past. Our staff has increased with the addition of a government affairs director, a position that you all approved, and I do think that that was one of the keys in making a difference, so that you had information quicker, you had more complete information, and you had a person that you could go to and get instant answers to your questions. So, I want to thank you once again for agreeing with us that a position like that needed to be created. It's proven to be extremely beneficial in cases like this. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Kahn and let him kinda walk you through a bit of a debriefing, and of course, he's available to answer, as am I, any of the questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Council President. Honorable members of council, Brian Kahn, Director of Emergency Preparedness, Homeland Security for the city of Livonia. Just wanted to take a moment to go through the tragedy that occurred on 6/5 of this month and just discuss what we did and how we did it and so forth. If you have any questions at the end, I'd be more than happy to answer those. So, as we know, we all know, it was just an absolute tragedy that occurred. It's something we don't like to see. It makes the hardest part of this job, actually, when you see something like this. With this particular event, it was just talking to National Weather Service, we brought all our resources to bear, including a lot of all our outside resources to bear on this incident itself, and it just goes to show the, as the mayor stated, the training and the professionalism of the city itself, whether it's from council, or whether it's from the first responders or DPW or anybody else that comes out with it. So, my heart does go out to the family itself. I can only imagine the emptiness, the tragedy, the feelings that they feel, and I guess I could never experience that, and it's the worst nightmare we all come across. So, but with this particular event, as we know, we had what was determined to be an EF-0 to an EF-1 tornado come through the city of Livonia. The sequence of events was this basically boiled down to, we received information from National Weather Service for a special weather statement. And if I may, real quick, just so we, and I'm sure you all know, there's three different statements that come out of National Weather Service, and they are the subject matter experts nationwide for us, and we get all our information from them as the foremost authority on weather events. We all know that weather, especially winter, summertime storms can be very, very unpredictable, as with this particular case. So, when they come out, they will put out what is a, it's a special weather statement. There's been several special weather statements that have come out recently. We had one last night, it's continuing on through this week. On that particular day, we also had a special weather statement. What that is basically stating is that there is a propensity or the possibility of sub-severe storms to occur, and they push this out information to municipalities along with the media outlets, so they can start getting this information out. The information went out the day before and during that day, hey, something's going to occur, we're probably gonna get thunderstorms coming through our area, but they're looking to be sub-severe at this point in time. These are not anything unusual. We go through these every year, and we see them, we saw them last night, and they come out. National Weather Service will also put out, and this all comes out through Norman, Oklahoma, which is a storm prediction center, they'll put out watches and warnings. Watches now step up to the severe category, and it's all based upon wind speeds. And for, you know, the deep dive into that, I defer to the National Weather Service because of them being the subject matter experts. Based on wind speeds, you can reach up to these severe levels, which will be watches. Hey, there's a high probability that we're going to have severe storms coming through our particular area, and it could spawn whatever it might be that you're gonna spawn, whether it's hail, heavy lightning, floods, whatever the case may be. Then you have the warning aspect. The warning is, there is an imminent threat that is currently occurring or going to occur in as life, safety, or property preservation that we're looking at for this. So, we have the three different warnings. And this particular day, the day before, and the day after, we're receiving these special weather statements saying something, we're gonna have sub-severe storms, something's going to occur. So, on that particular day, I was coming back from a meeting, and we had the first band of rain that came through. Second band of rain that came through around 3:30 unfortunately hit the severe stage when it came into Livonia, literally at school craft in 96, right at Laurel Manor, is where the National Weather Service is saying that this thing started. So, at that point, when it hit that severe level based upon the atmospheric conditions, and everything was ripe for it at that particular time, it spun up this tornado. Very unpredictable in these small squall lines, which National Weather Service is indicating this was. Very short county-wide squall line, very fast-moving, rain-wrapped, they really couldn't see anything on the radars itself. So, we did not necessarily get any warnings for that outside of these special weather statements, something was going to occur. So, this spawned into the severe weather, spawned and spun up that tornado very quickly over to Castle Garden subdivision, and then continued northeast for about five and a half miles, touching down in several different spots. When you talk to them, they'll say it's an EF-1 to an EF-0, then maybe an EF-1 again and an EF-0. They came out right away. So, when this occurred, obviously, radio traffic from our public safety answering point, dispatch started really going off the rails, so to speak, started getting a lot of information about house on a tree, people trapped, and so forth. I was responding to that area, immediately started getting pictures from other department heads, which is, it's just, it's how well we work here as a city when it comes to the departments. Everybody takes an onus of any event that does occur in the city. I contacted National Weather Service at that point in time, as I'm going to the scene, and said, hey, something just happened here in Livonia, I think we may have had a tornado. He's going, well, we're not showing anything, we didn't know of anything for this. And again, the National Weather Service has been a phenomenal partner with us. They answer our calls, they come in, they do phone calls and conference calls with us, so we can plan for and prepare for these events. So, when they look back at the radar itself, what they saw on the radar was just a real quick anomaly that was one sweep of that radar itself that showed something potentially was occurring. They didn't necessarily know. Second sweep of that radar, it was gone. That's how fast this thing actually occurred and appeared itself. There was no confidence. They based it on confidence levels to getting out warnings. So, when they pushed these warnings out, it comes into our public safety answering point, media outlets, so we can now push this information out to the public stating, tornado, high winds, straight-line winds are coming, we need to act appropriately, take cover, whatever the case may be with this. So, they saw this tornado at that point in time, they said by the time all that came through this tornado was already through the city of Livonia, moving up into our northern counties, Oakland County, Macomb County, St. Clair County, these all had a lot of significant wind damage. Some of the concerns we have with our severe summertime storms are the frontline winds that come through, as we all have seen, when you're watching these dark clouds coming, all of a sudden, it gets that cool cold air, and it becomes, start getting heavier and heavier. It's those frontline winds we have to worry about, also the potential for spawning of the tornadoes or whatever the case may be that's coming out of this thing. So, our first responders responded out to the scene, phenomenal effort to get out there, do the search and rescue, begin with the clearing of the roads, because we had to get these trees out of the roadway, so we could respond to any other emergencies that popped up, maybe even ones that were unrelated to the storm, could have somebody having a medical emergency at that point in time. So, first responders, public safety, DPW responded out to the scene to get this taken care of. As the mayor indicated, at that point in time, we immediately activated our emergency operations plan, which is a very thorough plan here for the city of Livonia. It is vetted by the state of Michigan and also vetted by the FEMA. We make sure that we follow all the protocols that they set in place for us, and this is all based on best practices that we've learned year after year, no matter what it is, from the hurricanes in the Midwest to the storms down in, the hurricanes that happen down in Florida, the west coast. So, we activated our emergency operations plan, also activated our emergency operations center. The activation emergency operations center brought in myself, the mayor's office, and all the departments that would play an operational role in responding to and recovering from this particular event. We got in, responded to this, went through, and it was just a phenomenal response, not only from the personnel that work for the city, from all departments, in just making sure we were following the plan exactly the way we need to follow this to get through events like this. Tragic as it is, it's just, this is what we planned for and prepare for with that. So, we got in, responded to emergency operations center, determined what we needed to do, went through the next few steps, the next few phases. We had significant help from our mutual aid partners, and I don't want to ever forget them as far as what they did, whether it was from Northville Township, DPW, Farmington Hills, DPW. Hills, DPW, Canton, DPW, everybody came in and just said, what do you need to get this done? My emergency management partners, Canton Township, Dearborn, Wayne County, Farmington Hills, Michigan State Police, they all came in to assist us to get through this. So it was just a team effort, what we think about, what we plan for and practice for. So the training, the practice, the planning, everything we did came to bear on this so we could get through this as well as we possibly could barring actual, the catastrophe. I know there was some question, there's been questions regarding our emergency warning sirens, and I would like to just quickly address that. Our emergency warning sirens are a tool, and they're one of many tools that we have to provide information to the public. And they're one of tools that we have, and then there's outside tools. We have our media outlets. I think our media outlets did a very good job at the, at the local level explaining why there was no warning with this and what occurred with this particular system itself. National Weather Service also did a good job as far as working with us, talking with us, getting somebody out here immediately to assess the situation, determine what was going on. So these warnings that come out, when we get them into the public safety answering point, the dispatch center, they come in as what are called impact warning statements. And it's a warning statement saying, in the next 10 minutes, five minutes, or 30 seconds, the city of Livonia is going to be impacted by X, whatever X may be, and we take appropriate action, so we'll activate the outdoor warning sirens. Bless you. The outdoor warning sirens are just what they are, they're outdoor warning sirens, they're attention-getters, nothing more than that. So when I'm out cutting the grass, or I'm at a baseball game, or a football game, or I'm lounging in the backyard, I hear the sirens going off, my job is now to go inside and seek further information from a reliable source to determine what's going on so I can take appropriate actions from that point forward. So in this particular case, because the event was so fast and so swift, and there was no warnings that were to be brought out because the storm just, it accelerated as fast as it did, we weren't able to activate the warning sirens at that particular point in time. We're very diligent with our active, with our warning sirens in particular. In the state of Michigan, we are the most conservative municipality, and we still activate our warning sirens at 58 miles an hour for wind gusts, and these are for the severe storms because it's our belief, and we've had numerous discussions with the mayor, and that 58 mile an hour winds can still cause a lot of damage, these are those frontline winds coming in. So we'll activate them for that. We'll also activate them if we get information from public safety personnel that spot a funnel, or spot a tornado that's on the ground, or train National Weather Service spotters. Now, all this activation comes into play as we see the progression of storms. As the mayor said, National Weather Service last year worked with us really well when it came to the Spree, to the point that we actually had to cancel the fireworks due to the impending storms that were coming and being tracked from the National Weather Service on the west side of the state coming through Livonia. So everything was in place, the scope of this was incredible with the amount of people that came in and people that assisted, our mutual aid partners. My thanks can't go out enough to the citizens. This is all part of what we preach and plan for, is this national response framework, is everybody coming together as a community, and Livonia completely represented that, whether it was from the citizens coming out with chainsaws, or police officers grabbing chainsaws so they could try and get this done, taken care of, to the mutual aid partners that came in and brought, as fast as they could, the cranes to lift trees up. I mean, the devastation was pretty incredible out there. So as the mayor said, tragic, tragic event, you know, I can't begin to consider the tragedy for myself, but all the pieces came into play and played out perfectly the way they should for this, and I just can't credit the administration from the mayor's office to your, to your office, to every other department in here that came in and realized, hey, now it's all hazards, and we all have to attend to this. So I would be happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn, Council. I think you did a very good job explaining it, and again, when you have tragedies and issues like this, it's the opposite, and like you said, the response that really shows a community's best attributes in the worst times. And so, you know, to your staff, your team, everybody in with the city, you know, thank you for everything you guys did to step up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do show three reports. This is going to be report A communication from the Department of Finance dated from May 31st, forwarding the Retirement System Annual Report, that's a receive and file. The second is coming from Finance, various financial statements from the city of Livonia ending February 29th, and the last coming from the Department of Finance, various financial statements ending March 31st. And with that, I am going to move on to the consent agenda. Items one through 13 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on June 3rd, 2024, and determined to be non-controversial. Council?
So moved. Support.
Tashnek and Budzinski with support. Do we have any comments from Council? Seeing none, any comments from the audience? Mr. Martin?
Yes, Chris from our great state of Michigan. I watched this, and there was a gentleman here that did a lot more speaking than our director of the libraries. But one thing I did pick up from it is there was going to be repairs done on the third floor. Never mentioned what these repairs are going to be throughout the entire library, but the third floor for people out there that might be, not be that familiar with the library here on campus, the third floor is where the administrative is, and no one is allowed to go up there, third floor. So it raises the question, what improvements are we doing for people on the third floor? Because the first and second floor, that's where the money should be spent for the taxpayers who are flipping the bill, not for the third floor, okay? So I don't know if any of you really read up on that, because it was never mentioned what improvements they were going to do on that third floor. I wouldn't approve this thing just for that particular reason, and that alone, okay? Shouldn't be a penny spent to make their life more pleasurable on the third floor, okay? There's much improvements that need to be made in the rest of the library, the first and the second floor, okay? So, and I'm over there quite a lot because the old people out there in TV land, I don't own a computer, don't want to own a computer, okay? So the computer that I use is at the library, and I'm very appreciative of that, okay? I like to go over there and use it. It's unfortunate, though, we only have eight. Other cities have 38, we have eight. But I wouldn't want to spend one penny on that third floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further audience communication? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher, would you please take the vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the consent agenda passes six to zero. We are now going to move on to unfinished business, which starts at number 14, which is a word of contract from the Inspection Department for BSNA cloud-based software, licensing and training for a total amount of $249,480, and with a not-to-exceed annual increase of 5% from budgeted funds. Council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I'd like to offer an approving.
Second.
With approving from Donovan, support from Jolly. Council, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to Mr. Hannah for presenting this to the Council. As time goes on, more technology is going to be coming into play, and I think we're getting ahead of the curve here by transitioning a lot of our stuff to the BSNA cloud system. BSNA is a site that is used a lot by the private sector in our community, and I think it's a really great tool to serve the residents and serve businesses in our community, so I think this is a great thing. And I'd also like to record to reflect that it looks like Inspection Department is spending more money than the Engineering Department for a change, so had to put that in there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from Council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the item passes six to zero?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. We'll move on to item number 15, which is a request for authorization to purchase two dump trucks through the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchase Agreement. This comes to us from the Public Works Department. Council?
I'll offer support.
Second.
Motion by Morgan, support by Jolly. Council, any further add-ons? No? Audience? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And item 15 carries six to zero. We're going to move on to item number 16, which is an award of contract, comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the Maintenance Service Contract for Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation for a period of three years with an option to renew for an additional two-year period from budgeted funds. Council?
Move to approve.
Support.
Jolly and Morgan?
Yep.
Anything further from Council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries six to zero. Moving on to item number 17, it's a roll call. This is for a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation to amend Chapter 8 dot 24 dot 050, which is keeping wild animals, birds and bees in order to follow, in order to allow for introducing beehives on park property for educational purposes. First reading was given by Councilmember Jolly on June 3rd. Councilman Jolly?
I'd like to offer a second reading at this time.
We have a second read. Anything further from Council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries six to zero. We're going to move on to item number 18, which is a roll call vote, proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law. In order to remove the role of the Director of Finance and the responsibility for management of the Director of Information Systems, a first read was given by Councilmember Jolly on June 3rd. Councilman Jolly?
I'd like to offer a second reading at this time.
We have a second read. Anything further from Council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. We'll move on to item number 19, which is a roll call vote from, this is a proposed amendment to Livonia zoning ordinance. Comes for us from the Department of Law in looking at petition 2024-01-01-01 submitted by SRND Development, requesting to rezone the property at 18340 Middlebelt Road, located on the east side of Middlebelt Road between Six Mile and Pickford Avenue. This would be from RUF to C1. A first read was given by Councilmember Donovan on June 3rd. Councilman Donovan?
Mr. President? I'd like to offer a second read.
We have a second read. Anything further from Council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And item number 19 carries six to zero. We're going to move on to item number 20, which is a roll call, this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, comes to us from the Department of Law to provide the changes in water service consumption rates become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2024. A first read was given by Vice President Martha Tashnek on June 3rd. Vice President?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a second read.
We have a second read. Anything further from Council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. Number 20 carries six to zero. Moving on to item number 21, which is a roll call, this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances to provide changes in the water service consumption rates to be effective with the first billing on or after July 1st. The first reading was given by Vice President Martha Tashnek on June 3rd. Vice President?
Mr. President, I'll offer a second read.
We have a second read. Council? Audience? Mr. Fisher?
Question?
Oh, if you could, make your way to the podium. I'm sorry.
I want to know what second read means.
Oh, the second read, just that basically, I wanted to touch base, but we were on such a roll on this, but basically, these were items that had been studied over the study meetings, so when we change an ordinance, we always do a first read, and then we come back to the second read and a roll call. No problem. I didn't want to jinx it, we made it this far.
I know you're jinxing it.
All right. So we are on item number 21, or did I, are we fresh on item number 22? 21. Anything further from the audience on item number 21? Seeing none, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And item number 21 carries six to zero. We're going to move on to item number 22, which is a roll call, this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances to provide changes in the industrial waste surcharge rate to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2024. A first read was given by Council Vice President Martha Tashnek on June 3rd. Vice President?
I will be happy to offer a second read.
A second read. Anything further from Council? Audience? Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries six to zero. Move on to item number 23, a roll call, another roll call vote, proposed amendment to Livonia[1619.33] Code of Ordinances to provide changes to the sewer disposal and maintenance rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2024. A first read was given by Council Vice President Martha Tashnik on June 3rd. Vice President?
I'll offer a second read.
We have a second read. Counsel? Audience? Right back to Mr. Fisher.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries six to zero. We'll move on to item number 24, which is a roll call, to propose amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended to provide the changes in the special rates for designated uses to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2024. A first read was given by Council Vice President Martha Tashnik on June 3rd, 2024. Vice President?
I'll offer a second read on this one as well.
We have a second read. And with that being said, is there anything further from counsel? Or the audience? All right. Now for the people that are in the audience, I didn't want to just sit there and rush through, but a lot of the meetings that most of you guys have been here for, we have discussed these in detail. It's just with the, with the finalization of the roll call, that's why I was just kind of running through it, but a great question and I appreciate it. Seeing nothing from the audience, Mr. Fisher?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And item 24 carries six to zero. That's it for unfinished business. We are now going to move on to new business with item number 25. It's an adoption of a resolution placing special assessments upon reference properties whose owners have not paid charges connected with the 2022 delayed sidewalk program and/or the 2023 sidewalk program. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
With approving from Donovan, support from Vice President.